So let's call the meeting to order, the Woodbury Select Board for Monday, February 24th, 2025 at 6:02 PM. Any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to the item about approving the minutes from the February 10th meeting.
Actually, I'm sorry, I was writing, I do have a couple of adjustments. I just wanted to do a quick update on the two grants that I've been working on. It'll be very, very interesting.
Okay. You want to do that, normally you go right after Skip? You want to do that again?
Yeah, sure.
Yep. Just feel free to remind me if I keep going. All right. We've all had a chance, an opportunity to see the minutes. Is there a?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the last meeting, which was like the 10th, I think.
February 10th, all right. Dana makes a motion that we approve the meetings from February 10th as written. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Great. Motion passes. And the minutes from the February 10th meeting are approved. Public comment, I don't think we have anybody on Zoom that wants to chime in. And I think everybody else is on the agenda. So we'll move on to the town clerk's report.
As of today, we have only had 18 dogs licensed for this year. You have one more month before the price goes up.
Looking at me? All right, I gotta do it. 18.
Tuesday evening, I will be at Hardwick Elementary School for that voting out there. And then Wednesday, I will be at Hazen at 7 o'clock for the voting there. And then Thursday, we will be in the school for our pre-town meeting.
Right. Thursday, Thursday evening, right?
Correct.
Can you remind me of the time of that?
September? Six?
And as, as ordered at the last meeting, I have written a notice.
Great.
That's been published on the usual places and will be put on the, maybe you could put one on your boardroom board.
Sure.
So I'll have to go down there tomorrow and put one on the.
Thank you.
Board at the town post office.
And Robin, did you take part in the mock town meeting at the Woodbury Elementary School? How'd that go?
They're very good.
Good.
The kids are very passionate about their choices that they make.
Awesome.
Yeah, and they're not afraid to get up to that mic and speak their minds.
Oh, they're, they're so funny. They just, well, they just trot right up there and once one does it, then the rest of them gotta get in line. They're really cute.
And the older ones are very concerned about the younger ones to make sure whatever gets picked will be good for them also.
Yeah, it's cool how they all know each other in different grades. Yeah, neat. I worry about whoever's gonna be in charge of that fishing, swimming, and hiking day.
That's what they decided on?
Yes.
A fishing, swimming, and hiking day?
Yeah.
They're gonna try for Buck Lake.
Oh, good.
Gee, yeah, but that's, yeah, that's still not.
She said she's gonna hire, I think, two lifeguards, so they're actually being able to swim.
Good.
And it'll be in June?
Yes.
Hopefully it'll be warm enough.
Muggy or buggy?
Buggy, yeah. One of the girls voted for bowling because she said there wouldn't be bugs.
That's fair.
It's a solid, solid reasoning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Robin. And Lily, the town treasurer's report.
Yeah, so total cash receipts income over the past two weeks, we're looking at $3,439.11.
Yep.
Majority from the income taxes, $3,311. And a small reimbursement that we've had from a previous overcharge. We had an electronic transfer to Vermont of $3,500 come through. Total payroll for expenses was $11,916.76. And account payable, $18,831.13. Other than that, everything is going smoothly with training. Have Darlene, I believe, from Nimmer coming down, not next week, the following week, to give me an overview on Nimmer. See how we're doing on it. And we have not seen the money from FEMA come in yet.
We'll talk about that any minute.
Soon.
You're coming Thursday night to the pre-town meeting forum?
Yes.
Good. And I put a little introduction thing on Facebook and Front porch forum. And people, of course, have been responding to me, but they're saying, welcome Lily and thank you, Brandy. But, but still, anyway.
Sounds good to hear.
Yeah, yeah.
Good, anything you need in terms of training or like?
As of right now, no. Things are looking smoothly. Starting to be able to call, recall things from memory, so.
Good. Nice. Thank you. So our next item is to sign the tax mapping contract. I'm not sure whether we expected Bonnie, we should table that till later part of the meeting?
Yeah, I just reminded her today. And I said that she could Zoom if she wanted to, or come in if she wanted to. She's not on the agenda until 6:30, so.
Okay. Well, why don't?
Question for today's name is, um?
Yes. Why don't we just kind of move that to a later part, latter part of the agenda? And then if, if Bonnie?
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
Zooms in, we'll come back to it.
If she comes in by 6:30 or, yeah.
Or whenever.
Yeah.
And that is moves us on to cruising, our 6:40 agenda item, which is to appoint our IT management team. And their, is a recommendation that we appoint Skip Lindsey. No, sorry, Skip Marcasani.
Typo, typo.
Thank you, I remember.
He caught, he caught that one.
Skip Marcasani.
Skip Marcasani. So Skip had mentioned this to me a little while ago, said that they would like to be appointed officially. I mean, he's been signing things as our IT manager, but he would rather have an official appointment. I don't know how we do that, but maybe we can send a letter.
I think it's probably based on the motion from the board. They're, I think, if you want to do that.
Okay, oh, I'd like to make a motion then that, that we appoint an IT management team with Skip Marcasani as the IT manager and Wayne Lappin, Wayne Lappin is his assistant.
Is there any discussion? Liz, any discussion?
No, no discussion.
Okay. All, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Great, motion passes unanimously. And so they are our new management team. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to the next one, Darren. The, thanks for coming, another that we're trying to do this once a month now, right?
Yeah, yeah, and I appreciate the reminder on Friday.
Yeah.
I do actually have it in my calendar this time as well. Regular, regular update, so. Update for, for the board and for the town, for MVU, the elementary portion of the educational system. We, let's see, since last I was here, we approved the motion for all pre-K students to be centered at the Lakeview campus now with transportation included, so that Hardwick family, or Hardwick families will get picked up there, transferred to, to Lakeview. Woodbury families, the, at least now, the plan is that the school here will be a drop-off point in the morning, like regular drop-off for, for school. And they will be lashed up to Greensboro.
They won't have to change buses in Hardwick?
No, that's my understanding, it'll be the direct shot from, from this campus. Which will mark the first time that we, as a town, have had access to the school-supported pre-K program. District-supported pre-K program, so.
Is that a full-day program?
It, it is, it's five days a week, it's full day, but you don't have to do full day. I'm not sure that the details have been worked out yet as far as like, well, I want to do three half-days a week. And as far as I know, that's an option for parents for pre-K. But the nice thing is that you can have up to full day, which, you know, full school day.
Yep.
Right, so 2:45, they're done and they're, and back this way.
So if they want to drive their kids up, they can do that, right?
Yep, and if they want to pick them up earlier in the day or do a half-day, I think all of that is a little bit in flux.
Flexible, yeah.
Yep, yep, but my understanding was this year, that's the way that the, the program that's already there was working where, you know, parents have that option and that flexibility.
Good.
So, yeah, to me, it's a, it's a win. Some frustration from some Hardwick folks that the pre-K classroom that was there will be moved. But as a board, I think we decided that it was best to have everybody, especially in, in light of the motion that was passed in October, to have all pre-K seats at that one campus. The discussion will go on, I'm sure, in terms of configuration and, and classroom sizes and such, you know, for the next couple of years. But that's where we are now. As was mentioned, we've got the meeting tomorrow night, which will be to elect new board officers, they're called, so, you know, board members. We have the one opening for Woodbury representative from Ada leaving. And we have at least two candidates who are, who have stepped up and are willing to run for it, so.
Who are they?
Heather Meacham.
Yeah.
And, oh, no, Mel, Melanie, I forgot her last name now. But she, she's one of the, or guys who are friends of Wes as well. So certainly not unfamiliar with the school and the system and everything, so.
Melanie or Melissa?
I think it might be Melissa.
Melissa Graham?
Melissa Graham?
I think so, yes. Yeah, so I, I'm happy to have either of them, and I'm glad that we have two candidates who are willing to step up.
So how do they, how does that work at the meeting? And everybody gets to vote, not just Woodbury people get to vote on Woodbury seat, but everybody gets to vote?
You're nominated from the floor. And then I presume we'll give people a chance to speak if they wish. And then, yeah, the voting, which is why Rob will be there.
And that's tomorrow night in Hardwick?
Yeah.
Almateris.
Hardwick Almateris.
That'll be in Jim, that'll be the first portion of the meeting. So we've got the one Woodbury seat, and then we have, I believe, three Hardwick seats that are up this year. It was gonna be two, and then we had, after our meeting beginning of the month, we had a member resign from the board. So now we have three seats.
So, and none of them are incumbents, aren't gonna run again?
There's one person who might run again, but he was undecided, Donnie Coda. He was undecided as of the last meeting whether he would. Our current chair, Kevin, is not coming back, choosing to focus on, you know, family, kids. He's got three kids and three different sports, so he's feeling the, the toll and the tension. And I think working in Malpilyer doesn't help that. So, and he's been on it for a number of years, so he feels like it's, it's time for him. Yeah, so it'll be, it's a larger portion than what's usually intended for seats. The way it was originally set up is that all the seats would be staggered, so that you wouldn't have as many people from every one town up at the same time or much turnover.
But they're not changing the number for each town, right? Yeah, it's whether or not they're staggered now.
I mean, to me, it's more.
You can't guarantee that.
For sure, and to me, I guess it's more a matter of experience.
Yeah, it's nice.
There's, there's a number of people who are leaving or have left that were on the board for a number of years. And, you know, I'm only in my third year, along with at least two other people. You know, four, I have four completely new people, so, yeah, it's all right. It'll, it'll be interesting. And then the second half of that meeting is the discussion on the, the budget. And presumably, there'll be some talk about the bond article. As an overview of that, the, the bond is for the PCB problem in the Hardwick classrooms, in the Hardwick Elementary classrooms. It's more or less completely taking out that entire wall that faces the church right next to the, to the entrance. Removing that, removing a lot of flooring materials, ceiling tile materials, all of which have tested as hotspots for PCBs essentially. As well as some of the window frames in that foyer area when you walk in from, from the street, from the sidewalk.
The caulking or something like that?
That's a big, big component of it, apparently. Yep, yeah, apparently there's a lot of stuff, glue, also the glue that put the tiles down, the caulking in the windows. Just, you know, Joe Houston, the facilities manager, walked through the, the different things and you're shocked, really? In that?
Yeah, that, it's interesting how they're presenting it as an energy conservation.
So.
That's pretty cool.
That is, yeah, I mean, it truly is, especially just the way that they're gonna do it. Their new windows, better walls, it's gonna make a big difference anyway. But it's also because doing it as an energy conservation grant allows us to apply for essentially forgivable loans at almost no interest.
Really?
So.
But it's a bond, it's still a bond being approved, right?
We have to secure the bond to say that the, the towns, the district is willing to pay for this. And then we have to, we've been told, and we have emails that say like, you're, you're assuring for this, like, you just have to have this secured, then you can start buying materials, you can start planning work. And then you're gonna be given this, and that's gonna, if it doesn't pay for all of it, it pays for most of it, and then most of it's forgivable. And that's because the state's PCB program dried up.
They're the ones that, yeah, okay, yeah, they went and mandated it, right? And then they ran out of money?
The testing started and then they said, oh, wow, this is a huge problem, actually, everywhere, weren't expecting. And, and ran out of money for the program. There is legislation, apparently, in Malpilyer right now to add more money to that program to face some of the known problems and some of the towns where it's been identified. But unfortunately, Hardwick has been left out of that list.
I saw that.
Yeah, I don't know why, and that's one place that I would encourage everybody to talk to all our representatives and say, hey, hey, us too. But in the end, I mean, in my mind, this is a, this is a good thing for everybody. Student staff, towns, et cetera.
How long will it take them to do the work?
So the plan now is to start basically late summer, and then it'll be most of the fall, so.
So the kids will be at school and this is going on?
Yeah.
Where were they, because that's all classrooms on there.
Well, it is, and one of the floors of classrooms, they can't be in right now anyway. So there's not as much displacement, but there's definitely, and Bill Dice, the principal, showed us the proposed layout of where classrooms will be. And probably the, the one that stood out most to me as least desirable is that two classes will be in temporary, whatever they, however they set it up, in the gym. Just the sound alone, I'm sure it'll be hard to, sure to navigate. You know, it's one of those things, where else are we gonna do it, I guess?
Yep.
But, yeah, I mean, ideally, if things go well and start on time and materials arrive, it, it won't take as long. But my, when I remember the timeline, it'll be before winter, you know, to find that, as you know.
Yep.
What is, what is the price tag?
I can look it up quick enough. So before I.
That's all, yeah, you can, I'll find out tomorrow too.
The other things that we approved were to have, so the fire marshal deemed the fire escape on the side of the building over here insufficient and not up to code. And the hope was that because the building itself has two sets of stairs, that they would say, well, that's good enough, but, you know, we need a fire escape coming off the, the side of the building. So we approved funding to hire an architect, to do some blueprint designs of the school, and to come up with proposed designs for how to replace that. So that money's been approved and is in the works in terms of hiring, which, which firm is gonna start that work? With the idea that a design for that will, will be ready sometime in the spring. And then hopefully over by the summer, we're approving the funds to actually construct whatever it may be that's gonna replace that. And there was an update on the water source. Essentially, they're planning this spring to figure out where a new source is gonna be for, for the school to be able to, I think, the water drinkable again. So those were the main highlights.
Darren, does 1.2 sound right?
Yep, that's 1.2, that is.
So that would be basically a new well?
I think that's the plan, yeah, as, as I understand it right now. Because when they did all of the investigation, it traced all the way back to the spring. So it's not like it's just replacing piping or a pump, it's the water source itself has it. So my concern is, I think, the same as everything else is, if they dig a new well, is it just gonna be in that well water, wherever you choose to dig it? But I guess we won't go until it's dry.
Do we know if any of the resident homes around the well have been tested for?
They have, some of them have, I mean, I know mine has. And my downhill neighbor has.
Do you show any signs?
No, no. What, did they do yours, no? Yeah, I don't know how they picked who to, who to contact, but they started to go up around the corner, and nobody was home that day. We went up as far as Heather Holmes. And didn't find anything, none of those showed anything. But we're all on like the other side of the road, so.
Presumably, the water itself that is coming uphill and down this way. I mean, the old, the old deeds for, for town had a water spring that's up kind of behind my property that used to feed two, three different houses in town, even two. So I assume the watershed starts up there and works its way down.
Yeah, and there's another one in the stream up beyond the Grant's house that used to serve my house and the property right uphill from mine that's abandoned now, but anyways, that's.
Yeah. Yeah, any other questions about school board at the moment? Certainly willing to, to answer, but I think those are the highlights of where we're at, both at large and just this, this town in general.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
How many kids are in the school now? Forty-something, we had 42 the other day, right?
Yeah, and not everybody was in it.
Including my daughter who was homesick.
No, she was there.
Oh, you're right, she came home later.
Oh, okay, yeah, I was gonna say, there can't be another Moira. The kids have interesting names, you know, when I was in school, it was like Bob and John and Dave. Anyways, yeah.
I don't remember exactly how many are, are at each campus right now, but.
So Darren, I have my perennial question about the outdoor classroom, which has sort of been dormant for a number of years now. Do you, you probably don't know whether that's still planned on being done or not, but.
It is.
It is?
So in the town report, I believe it was a part of our letter in there.
Okay, I'm not even like that.
The, the plan, as far as I remember, is the spring or summer, I think, once class is out, to actually do that work.
Oh, great.
It's good news.
Yeah.
Pretty nice.
It was, it was nice to kick that hornet's nest and not be full of bad news.
Thanks, Darren.
Great, thank you. Good luck tomorrow night.
Thank you.
That's at, remind me again, that's at 6?
Six.
Did we say, okay.
Yeah, I would suggest coming a little earlier so that you can check in with town clerk and make sure you're able to vote.
Okay.
And parking.
Oh, yeah, parking.
Bonnie, thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Sounds like we have a contract that presented last time, that potentially we should sign this evening. I don't know if there's anything else that we need to do or talk about beyond that?
Have any, I know that you and Lizzie hadn't heard too much about this before the last meeting, so.
I'm ashamed, if I have any questions.
So I was thinking that's why we.
Questions about the quote or the work, the scope of work, which she was planning on doing.
Sounds of the three estimates you got, that this woman is the, is the way to go, so.
Well, I guess I'll make a motion then that we hire Christine Chamberlain Mapping of Bristol, Vermont to do our tax maps for sometime in 2025, and probably not all this year, but whatever, whenever it's done, it's gonna be great. Her, her estimate of $8,200.
Liz, any, any discussion?
No discussion.
All right. All those in favor of approving the, and signing the contract with Christine Chamberlain Mapping for tax mapping for the 2025 tax maps, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
And, thanks.
Sorry, there's only one line.
Well, yeah, I don't need to sign it, that's fine.
Next one, you'll, you'll have to.
Yeah, take care.
Sign everything.
And then we hand that back to Bonnie?
Yeah, I guess you can.
I'll put a copy at the town clerk's office.
What?
Okay. I'll bring a copy to the town.
Right, yeah, but you want the original to send to her, right?
Yeah.
Okay, here. Make sure Robin will get a copy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Let's see where we're at.
Did you make a copy for me too, since I gave a mine?
You want a hard copy, do you want me to?
Ready? All right, let's do it. All right, road commissioners' report.
Not a lot to report, we're into a different weather pattern now.
Yep.
It's gonna be warmer and a mix of rain and snow, just things to expect. Sand pile is hurting.
Yep.
As I've been saying, but I think we're gonna be okay. I'm gonna look into seeing if we can get some of our sand from gravels, but I'd like to wait and let the snow go down a little bit and give them some time to prepare. And I think our sand pile will allow that. We had a truck breakdown this morning, and I've got people working on it. Not sure of, or at least to diagnose it, not sure of what it is yet.
Which truck?
The oldest one, the 14, 2014.
Is that the, oh, okay, that's the old, big one?
Yeah, the ten we were, yeah. So it's thrown a calls and it went into D-rake, which it, when it goes into D-rake, there's no power. Got just pretty low power there, a little bit, so. I've got a guy coming with a computer to figure out what's going on.
How does that affect, you know, it seems like maybe, maybe we won't have a ton of snow, but in the event that we did have a lot of snow, how would that affect you?
Pretty dramatically.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, that, that truck takes care of one roof.
Yep.
And so we do have the one ton that we can put sand on with.
Yep.
But it doesn't have a wing and it only carries. But it doesn't have a wing and it only carries a couple of yards of sand, so it's we can keep going, but it's not as efficient. So hopefully we can get it fixed relatively quickly and that in action.
Okay.
So other than that, I don't have much else to record. I mean, we've just been on the road.
Yep.
Sand and plowing, not a lot of action.
Roads look good.
Yeah, I think I think so. I think people are getting around all right.
Banks are all pushed back and.
Banks are pushed back, yeah. We've got a few more of the small roads in the village to do, but most of the big ones are are done. Luckily, last week it stopped snowing for a little bit and we were able to get a guy on the grader, so.
Yep.
That's that's helped a lot. We started pushing banks back out here in the yard, the schoolyard for Tommy, the better part. And there was a few cars in the yard this morning, so we were able to get this side, the left side. We'll get a, no school this week, so we should be able to find a time when there's not cars here. Get that truck back to the orange base. I had a question. Contractor called me, wants to cut some trees for a resident. He needs to bring a crane in, so he was wondering about closing the road for like a day, sort of in between the bus routes.
Are they in the town right of way?
Yes.
So they need to.
Well, not the trees.
Oh, okay.
He wants to park a crane in the town right away.
Oh.
So he can reach out over and get these trees that are hanging over somewhere in the house. I didn't know what our policy was for closing the roads.
What road is it?
It's East Hill.
It's a long way to go around.
Yeah, we'd have to detour them down Sand Hill and through Cowals.
It's not the end of the world?
It's not terrible.
Yeah.
And it would only be for, you know, one day, as as he described it to me.
So after the first bus run and then before the?
Right, yeah, I told him, I told him we can't stop the buses.
Sure.
So if he could set up, you know, after the buses are done and then make sure he's done by three o'clock when the buses come back through.
Oh, okay.
So it would just be would just be the daytime traffic that would be affected. Most most commuters would already be gone to work by then as well. But I just didn't know what our policy was.
We don't have a policy.
How to use your discretion?
We do, you know, won't we? Well, we can, what we have.
I could help him with close, you know, with signage to close it so people aren't totally confused.
It certainly happens in other towns all the time.
I think we have a. Do we have a form for work in the right of way? We have that curb cut form. But that's just for, yeah.
I don't remember seeing one for work in the right of way.
I mean, we had situations where people wanted to put in a, well, you had the one where somebody wanted to put in an underground power line, but that wasn't one that involved closing a road, so.
Right, right. I mean, I think we we should look into that, maybe having some sort of policy for that for somebody may want to build a fence that's in the right of way, or somebody may put a shed too close to the right of way. And if we don't have nothing to.
I think we do have a policy for that.
We don't, I mean.
For a shed.
Or for like permanent structures.
Anything in the right of way.
Yeah, but not, I mean, temporarily set up to do.
It's just the law, we don't need to have a policy, but, you know.
Okay, but if somebody wanted to do that, you'd have to give them a permit.
No, if somebody wanted to put a fence in the right of way, I don't think we could give them a permit.
I think that's against the law.
Right.
I agree.
Just can't. Not saying it hadn't happened.
I mean, the less obstructions I have in the right of way, the better.
I mean, there is that one shed, but.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So that came to me and he wanted me to check with the board, or I wanted to check with the board and see what, how you want to deal with it. But if you want, just give it to me as.
It's gonna be during mud season or hopefully not?
Hopefully not, hopefully it'll be soon.
So if he does damage the road, he'd have to pay for it? You might mention that.
Well, that would be the same as, you know, roads are posted and.
He can't bring his crane out on a posted road. He can't bring his crane out.
No, but even if even if it's not during the posting season, if he damages the road, he still has to pay.
Yeah. I can make sure he's got insurance. I can get a certificate of insurance, make sure we get that.
That's pretty good.
I'm sure he wants to do it before beach Florida went in.
Before the roads melt, yeah?
Yeah.
Smart.
Which could be, could be any day now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, I mean, it's a weird year, so I, anything could happen.
Yeah.
I mean, we could go to fifty, sixty degrees in the next couple of weeks. And that's what I'm feeling in my bones actually, but.
Maybe just wish for a thank you.
Just from my experience. We'll see.
Thanks, Alfie.
So, yeah, that's that's all I have for that. I'll get ahold of him. We'll set a plan, maybe I can get ahold of you, Michael, to post that.
Sure, I could put a thing on the porch for him and we could get it on the the website.
Yeah. Just so people know, they have some sort of idea of what's going on.
So to notify the people who are affected?
Yeah, people that live on the road.
Yeah, okay.
Just so people know.
There probably are are few enough so that they could be contacted individually. I mean, there are people who just use the road who would have to just be detoured. But the people who live on there might deserve a warning.
It's just nice to give people a heads up.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a lot of people that live down towards Cabot.
Oh, sure.
Down the line, they're gonna come this way and then they see a road closed sign, they, you know.
We have, yeah, we have in the past actually made a physical sign that would be plumped probably in a snowbank at this time of year on the side of the road for people, telling them that the road will be closed from a certain time on a certain day so that they see it as they're driving, driving on the road. I've made those signs for for great in the past. Happy to get out my big brush in. In fact, I think they're still stuck in my woodpile somewhere.
Yeah, so I'll I'll figure out that date with with the contractor and see what day he's gonna do that and we'll make it happen.
Thanks. Any else?
Unless there's questions. Yeah, no questions?
I'll come in.
Cruising metler.
Doing a wonderful job.
Oh, wait, I have one.
Great job. And you can tell when I'm driving to work exactly when I cross from Woodbury to Cowals. There's a definitive line.
I agree.
Can you say that again?
You get that recorded? I do have one other thing. Any any progress on on buying a truck? Or are you just waiting for somebody to say, go ahead and buy a truck? I'm just wondering whether the prices are gonna start going up like crazy for because of tariffs and stuff.
They probably will. Anything coming from Canada, which is most of our, most of the steel products that build a truck are are gonna be affected by that. So, yeah, sooner the better. I understand we can't do it until, we can't actually purchase it until July one, right? But I can start getting some solid numbers and.
And this is to replace the 2014, right?
Yes.
Yeah. The one that's down.
Yeah, and to touch on that a little bit, I think I want, would like to have a spare truck for instances like we're in right now.
A what?
A spare.
A spare truck, okay, yeah, yeah.
So I'm gonna look and see, I'm gonna find out what they're gonna offer us for trading and that'll help with our decision. But if they're only gonna give twenty thousand dollars for that truck.
It's worth more to us.
It's worth more to us to have it sitting in the yard.
I agree.
Cases like this where we have one down. So that, you know, just something I want to think about. See what what the value is, the benefits of it. Because I know having a spare truck would be very beneficial. Because, I mean, we've had problems with that brand new truck, the 2024. It wasn't a big deal, but it but it was down for two days while it went to the shop and we were out without it, so. I think it's it's definitely a dear request perhaps of spare. Which would mean we wouldn't have, you know, we wouldn't have the trade money to go towards the new one. But that's why I want to sort of evaluate that, to see how much we're gonna get and if it's worth it.
Makes sense.
So the reason for waiting until July one is because the money, the ninety thousand dollars that we budgeted to go into the HERF fund. I mean, if the money's there, I don't know why we have to wait till July one.
But anyway. Because it doesn't get transferred, because that ninety grand doesn't get transferred to the HERF fund until July one?
Right.
So that we'd have ninety grand there to.
But if we have, if we have the money just waiting to be transferred from one pocket to the other.
Why can't it happen, really?
Anyway.
It's a great question for somebody other than me.
A new treasure.
I need some research on that.
Yeah, well, I can I can start getting numbers together, maybe pick out a truck, start getting things together for that.
Because from the time that you order it to the time it arrives is quite a bit of time, right? Like.
Could be.
Could be.
It depends. This new company that I found in Austin, in New Hampshire, has trucks already together.
Great.
So if they have a truck that's together that will fit our bill, the the stuff that we want on it, then we, it could be really quick, could be quite fast.
The last one was more than a year.
We waited a year.
Right, right. But we did it, we did it sort of the old fashioned way. We ordered ordered the cab chassis and then, you know, waited for the for the parts to go onto it and there was a lot of, there was a lot of waiting. So that'll be part of my my next step will be to confirm that we can get a truck that we want and how long it will take and all of that. So it sounds like I'm getting permission to do that?
I'd start looking for sure.
Yeah.
Got to happen.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, just start looking, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I can get more more information to bring back.
Yeah.
You know, the the actual full cost, the timing, when it could be done. We can make decisions on that.
Thanks, Alfie.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lindsay, something, maybe you have some good news?
We do. So I turned it out the update, it's updated. So item number one, the sixteen projects associated with disaster four seven two zero V R, that's a July twenty three disaster. Nothing's really changed given the first ward monitoring and amendment phase. So we're just watching and make sure, making sure that mitigation projects are moving forward and I'll talk about that in a second. The next sentence, on the thirty first of January, I assigned a financial report from the Department of Public Safety releasing a little bit over eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to the town of Woodbury. But there was a caveat to releasing those funds in a letter that said any excess funds that remain from the two mitigation projects, we have to give back to the Department of Public Safety, which flies in the face of everything I read in FEMA and also from emails from the recovery officer who stated that you can keep the funds as long as you use them for mitigation projects. No trucks, no floors, mitigation. So I, you know, I was somewhat persistent with them and they they wrote back on February twelve saying, yeah, any leftover obligated funds, yes, may be used for mitigation projects. So I have that in an email. They amended that letter that they sent to us saying that we have to give back the excess funding and Diana has those now to sign. Once those are signed, I'll scan them and send them to the Department of Public Safety and we'll release them.
Do you want to review them all before I sign them?
I think I looked over your shoulder earlier.
Okay.
And then definition of mitigation projects, though, how, you know, I know that we've got a bunch of culvert work that we're talking about, doing, that would apply, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and then beyond that, what do mitigation projects?
Something like Michael's engaged with.
Right, right.
Things like that, you know, anything we can, it doesn't have to be culverts. It could be something to do with the town hall or the town offices. You know, and, you know, like if you need to replace the bulkhead to mitigate flooding in the in the cellar, you know, anything to do with that, then it'll be up to me and Danielle to make sure that any projects that we leave our mitigation projects pass the test, FEMA tests, before we move forward with contracting or actual work.
Okay.
And that's our responsibility to do that. So we'll have, boy.
Some plain money.
Well, it's plain, but it's real honey, you know, it'll be in our treasury. Hopefully drawing some interest. So there's a lot of hoops you have to jump through, as you can imagine with FEMA and making sure that these are mitigation projects. We'll have a mitigation officer out here looking at the projects, certainly, you know, for site visits, just to be certain that they're okay with it. They may even want to write a mitigation project for, say, the culvert work that we hope to do or maybe work in the town offices. They'll want to come out and take a look at that at a minimum.
Okay.
And that's down the road.
Yeah.
We'll have, you know, a lot of money.
Get through these bridge projects first.
Close to half a million dollars, which is not insignificant.
No.
It's a lot of culverts.
It's a lot of culverts.
So how many years do you have that you have to use that up before it needs to go back?
Well, I, after everything is done and we do like a project through, there'll be excess funds left over. We'll have, from what I read, eighteen months to spend that money. However, you could write for extensions on that.
Still.
So and depending upon what goes on with the President of Administration, hopefully they won't claw back any of that money.
Right.
But they found me on my email somehow sending those two things they sent to me a couple of weeks ago. So they found me, they can certainly find Woodbury. So anyhow, and that's a positive note, you know, I was happy to see that. So once I get that information into the Department of Public Safety, they'll transfer those funds.
Okay.
So next paragraph, we began, Danielle and I began compiling category Z administration cost labor office. And category Z funding, obligated funds are capped at five percent of the total obligated funds. So we could spend, and these are reimbursable to the time. So five percent of, let me put my glasses on here. The total FEMA obligated funds are one million ninety five thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. So five percent of that is fifty four thousand seven hundred and seventy eight. So we could spend up to fifty four thousand seven hundred and seventy eight dollars and be reimbursed a hundred percent for those administration administrative costs.
What can, what do administrative costs look like?
Like me, like Danielle.
Yeah. Okay, great.
What we're doing.
Yeah.
Categorizing projects.
Yeah.
But we don't have, there's nothing else, like you didn't have to buy computers or any thing like that, printers or anything.
It was our own stuff, our own software, that's okay. I occasionally steal or read my paper from the town clerk.
Yeah, I do too.
So anyhow, so far we spent approximately fourteen thousand dollars of that.
Oh, good.
And that's twenty months of work for both Danielle and I.
Oh.
So we're well under budget. So we're well under budget.
Huh, maybe we need to buy a computer.
No.
Yes.
No, I couldn't do that.
Pay you and Danielle more.
No, we're fine, we're fine. So anyhow, you know, from the FEMA perspective, everything's looking positive. The, uh, the next disaster, which was July 2024, uh, not much has changed. And the first paragraph on page two, the projects that moved from the CRC, which is the Consolidated Research Summit in Puerto Rico, and neither in FEMA's pending 406 Hazard Mitigation Planning Q. So to get that out of the queue, it takes a lot of work. So I started with telling them that we don't plan any mitigation projects or anything associated with 4810DR, which means no mitigation projects at all. I think we could use some excess money and make it, leftovers from the mitigation projects from, I know this is going to be confusing, from the 2023 disaster to do mitigation projects, you know, step back and, you know, make a concerted effort to identify those projects that really need to be done. So I didn't want to rush into that, just said, no, get them out of that queue and send us the funding while it's still available. So we'll see what happens with that. And I'm not sure, if that, if that happens, we'll get approximately $80,000 from FEMA for that disaster. And under the unexpected challenges, I haven't received any emails from the Office of Management and Budget, nor from the Rhode Island Attorney General. There was a little note on the FEMA Go website this morning that said, you know, please bear with us, you know, be patient working on this website.
Are they scheduled for a bunch of personnel cuts?
Well, this is the first time I saw the little banner box on the greeting page on the FEMA Go website. It's like, and Lily and I are having a real difficult time re-registering Woodbury and SAMD, which is System of Accounts Management for the federal government.
Yeah.
Really difficult time.
I thought it was, I mean, I know it was difficult before, but I thought it was like done, not done.
What, what is?
Forever.
And re-registering, it took me several years, took me about a half a month.
Can you explain, explain to me what it is?
It's a, it's a mechanism to get FEMA money, federal money.
Okay.
Doesn't have to be FEMA, could be from USB8 or something like that into our accounts. So it has our bank account, it has Lily as the treasurer, as a point of contact, it has Robin Durkey as a point of contact, it has me as the administrator, and among other things, mostly it's the bank accounts. And to re-register it, you know, before this year was pretty easy. You just go on the site, you know, registration is up, what do you want to do, re-register, yep. And you go through all the details and you said, okay, submit. But now it's like, it's crazy. It's like we have been it all over again. To the point where they want, I've been on two half deaths this morning. They want a, a utility bill to make sure that 1672 Vermont Route 14 is actually the town.
Oh my God.
It is crazy. It's like we started all over again. And even though we have a unique identifier for the town, we have something called the cage code, which directs all the money into, into our bank account. It's just like, we have to do it all again.
Oh, it's only going to get worse, I'm afraid.
So anyhow, we're in the process of doing that. We have three business days to, to this re-registration, re-registration. This is the second time I go through the whole thing. And hopefully by Wednesday, we'll have it done.
Yeah, I'm digging into it tomorrow.
All right.
I'll let my phone up.
Yeah.
So, uh, that's all I have for tonight. Any questions?
Are you dedicated to advancing administration priorities? Focusing on taxpayer dollars to advance stronger and safer America?
You know, I've always been for that.
That's all good stuff, huh?
So another thing on my agenda tonight, which I have no idea why none would want to select me to work in firms now.
And what, that's firms?
Flood insurance rate maps. I got an email from Diana saying, hey, you know, you don't want firms.
Well, I think the email came to Robin and she sent it to all of us, including you.
I just disregarded it. I saw firms and don't know what firms are.
What?
I disregarded the email.
You what? You disregarded it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I did do that.
Sure, that's all, I gave it to you again.
Yeah, so.
So yeah, my problem was...
To be looked at, I looked at it. And this is a map for flood insurance rates. And so they're updating the flood insurance rate maps for the state of Vermont.
Yeah.
So I looked at Woodbury and Woodbury's map has not been updated since, I think, 2003?
A long time.
Or maybe, you know, so they are updating it. But this is something that, once I got into it, didn't want to get into it.
Does that affect insurance rates for?
Just people.
Everybody, residents, probably cam.
And town.
Yeah.
And any tunnel project, I presume.
Yeah.
I'm sort of passive with Mark to get a hold of these rate maps, you know, to increase coverage for town offices and other tunnel facilities as a whole.
So where I, where I got stuck was it says the draft firm database is available at the following FTP link and then, yeah, so that's what I was hoping that you could do.
Yeah, I clicked on the FTP.
And it worked? Because it didn't work for me, so it's okay. Okay.
And it'll lead you to a map.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh.
The state of Vermont map, and you've got the manager in the point of origin. Fortunately, my house is not on it.
Woodbury can't have any, does it have any property to the floodplain?
Here are just few down on Woodbury Lake that were in the last version.
Like Woodbury Lake and two other of the lakes, um, the shoreline is designated as a floodplain.
Okay.
Certain parts of it, not the whole thing.
Plan about that. And it's my understanding that FEMA is also reassessing what the floodplains are after the last couple of years, which may be affecting.
Maybe that's what this was about.
Yeah.
Engineering model summary table.
So are they requesting us to do anything with this?
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, okay.
Oh.
So who's involved? So there's a 30-day window for who's involved, to get involved. So a lot of folks may be involved in each step of this process and it is a process. Unfortunately, they give an outline of who should be involved. The select board will consider and approve by law updates or sometimes through the Australian ballot. So if you weren't updating your flood zone or you're zoning by adding a flood plain or whatever, then you may want to do that by Australian ballot. Your planning commission, Michael, will start the review and update process and work with the community. Your floodplain administrative officer and development review board can advise during the process. So I think the next one, the regional planning commission should really get involved in this, you know, because I'm sure they're...
They, they're, yeah, it's definitely being discussed on that level too.
The regional planning commission may assist with the updating process and public engagement. Private planners can be engaged and contractors to assist.
This particular one seems to talk about the Lemoyale watershed area. And I noticed on this little map that was attached to the letter, it has the part of Washington County, it's just, you know, the corner up there that's in the Lemoyale watershed. It's not most of Woodbury.
Yeah, this was kind of like, until I wrote, wrote a little bit. So they're updating the insurance maps.
Right.
Basically. And that may cause you to update your zoning maps, which may cause you to, uh, homologate bylaws. So I would call the regional planning commission a...
Yeah.
And there may be financial aid to help to fund that more.
Somewhere.
I, I can find out more about that.
I couldn't see where there's any financial aid.
Yeah.
Available.
We have 30 days to review the appropriateness of the models in the draft firm database and provide additional data to supplement, modify the draft database.
I went online and looked at that draft database.
Yeah.
So it's already in existence?
It is, yeah.
Yeah. How did it change?
I don't know.
Hard to tell.
I didn't, I didn't have the original database to compare.
And this may be just for the Lemoyale River watershed and there may be a whole other thing coming for the Wansky watershed.
Maybe.
So.
Yeah.
FEMA is currently updating the flood insurance rate maps in Vermont for the National Flood Insurance Program. So assuming that's all of them.
Yeah, this may be, if they're doing it in stages, it may be they're, you know, addressing one watershed and another, I'm not sure.
This thing goes on to read, discovery meetings have already happened around the state, tucking out the process that usually lasts about four years.
Yeah, there have been major work on the, on a number of different state agencies and towns with the different watersheds. That's been, that has been going on for a number of years, whole kind of re-planning stuff and, um, there's, you know, probably copious documents about all of that work. But it has been, you know, by the watershed rather than just the whole thing. Like there was, you know, the Wansky River watershed, starting from Woodbury and Cabot all the way to Burlington and Wansky, you know, all of those different towns were involved in some big study and participitation. That's been, and I know that's been happening for at least four or five years. So resulting documents of...
So we have, Woodbury has 30 days.
To provide feedback.
But you're now down to, well, this was written on the 14th, so.
Woodbury has 16 days. That's all I have.
All right, thanks Skip.
I wanted, well, before Alfie tries to take off, you mentioned bulkhead and I just wanted to remind Alfie, I don't know if it's happened since you've been on our road commissioner crew or on our road. But anyways, um, this pile of snow behind the bulkhead used to be a problem because it would, um, it would melt and go into the bulkhead. So for, it probably hasn't happened the last couple of years, but before that, the guys used to come in the spring and move that away. So.
Okay.
Not quite yet, but...
We've been moving it periodically through the winter, just for a plow.
Oh, okay. Because the gas people have...
We had to pull it the other day when we needed oil.
Yeah.
Not oil, propane.
Yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, we've been trying to clear, um, the septic tanks right there, so we can't get in there too far. When I plow, I sort of plow straight in.
You taint it.
And early on this year, we weren't getting much snow, so that was fine. But then we started getting bigger amounts that built up faster, so we've been taking it out. And we'll continue in the spring when we're done with the snow, we'll clean it up.
Yeah, sure. Before it tries to melt, before it all melts. Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks Alfie. And thanks Skip. Ethics training, Mr. Reed.
So, nothing new. Rob, after the town meeting and you've appointed officials and officials have been elected, I'll get with Robin and we can tweak the letter that goes out to include both ethics and ethics training and open meetings law. Otherwise, all, all, all speed ahead.
Have we, uh, do you get the list or how did, you know, because we south certify, right? There must be some sort of list that...
Just let me know.
Just let you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then after town meeting and we get that set up, I'll switch that over to the town office so that Robin or Pam can keep it up to date. But for now, just, just send me a note saying I'm certified.
Got it, I'm certified.
Okay.
It doesn't take much.
No.
So it's number four.
Oh.
Lily, Lily is certified and Lindsay is certified.
Better get at it.
Oh boy, really, yikes.
There we go. And on Zoom, it's working and I can see a couple of things we'll tweak to get it to work better. I'll put together a one sheeter, get it off to the town office and that's ready to use whenever you want.
The reason I put that on the agenda was before I talked to you, I was getting all kinds of emails from people wanting to sign on, I don't know.
I get those too.
So John said he fixed that, so, but it was still on the agenda, so.
The problem with Zoom is that if it doesn't recognize the computer or the location, it may want to send you an authentication code. And since several of us share the town Zoom account, the only way to make sure we all get the, the person using it gets the authentication code is to send it to all of us. It's a pain, but that's the way it works.
So you're saying that some of those emails I got were authentication codes? No?
They were, and Zoom keeps changing things too. Zoom has just added a thing, so if someone comes into a meeting before the host has started it, an email goes out saying that's happened. So that's what happened on Friday when I was having a meeting. So I found a setting in Zoom where you can turn that off, so it's turned off. So it's kind of like whacking away at the weeds.
So when, who's this Alex Hendrick?
You know, what we should probably do when someone joins a meeting remotely, we should probably have them introduce themselves and...
You can do that now.
Yeah, because so we don't know who, I don't know who this is.
It seemed to still be here.
I can introduce myself if you would like. I am a town resident, not just a stranger.
Okay, well, welcome.
Um, yeah, and I do plan on being at the town meeting. I'm using my husband's phone. I, I have been at past town meetings. My name is Sarah Hetrick. And I just joined the meeting because I was interested in the, I saw on the agenda that there was, talk about the flood mapping and I was just interested in what was happening in that. I'm actually, as I tell everybody in town I can, just to get it out there if anybody ever needs help, but I am a GIS analyst. I actually work for the federal government, so I may have a lot of free time coming up.
I'm sorry.
I'm also actually getting a certification in floodplain management. And I just started working with the floodplain manager in Hardwick to get involved on projects, get some on-the-ground training. So I am hoping to, well, I'm hoping to keep my job. But if I don't keep my federal job, then potentially work locally doing some sort of floodplain management. But it is just a certification I'm interested in having, so I was just kind of curious on, on that, so just decided to sit in for the discussion.
Could, could I ask you a question? I'm on the planning commission and we're ready, we're ready.
Sitting behind you right now, but...
We are badly needing new members. Would you be, I'm just saying, or just...
Would you be, I'm just saying, or just saying that so that if you might be interested in being on the planning commission, that would be great.
Yeah, I don't mind. I would be on the planning commission. I was interested in going for the Lister position this year, but I don't know that I want to do two things. But I would do the planning commission instead if there's openings. I don't, I, I would assume the planning commission is unpaid and that would be okay versus the Lister being paid.
The planning commission is definitely unpaid.
But yeah, happy to, happy to help on that. I don't know what that would entail, but interested in being involved on the town level if there's need there.
I think I met you last year at the pre-town meeting. I think we talked, and I was wondering if you're going to be at the pre-town meeting on Thursday night again.
Yes, I was planning on.
Okay, we'll chat then.
Yeah, we can talk, talk more about it, but, but nice to see you all.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out. You, sorry, can, what is the name of the person for the planning commission? And can I see your face again, just so I can find you in the crowd?
Uh, my name is Michael Gray, and I will be at that pre-town meeting also.
Okay, great, I'll, I'll say hi.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks for joining tonight.
Thank you.
See, Zoom does.
Yeah, our first Zoom customer, yay.
Great. So any other issues around technology or Zoom that we want to address?
I'll just mention that Alex Pelts and I and Ben Whitty, the developer, met last week to start talking about redesign of the homepage of the website. Meantime, the developers made some incremental improvements that have, I think, made the site a lot more useful. I don't look at the raw numbers, but just to graph, the traffic is starting to go up a lot. So I think people are finding it more useful. And as a reminder, there's a page on my site about the ethics and open meetings law.
Who keeps the calendar?
I do.
So anybody, so you just have to keep track of what's going on? Things that you hear from other people or other postings or something?
People send notes.
You know, like chicken pie supper at the church and things like that?
Watch front porch forums and stuff like that. And as part of the redesign, you know, at some point I'll be passing that off to the town office, but certainly have to keep helping out with it. But I won't need to be the only person who does it.
Thank you. It's huge. All right, town meeting update. And I imagine, Steve, you may or may not want to have some input in this part. I know that what I would really like to do for this part is at least spend a little time. And I know you don't think we're going to get any questions about the budget, but I would love to have, just be kind of prepared with kind of like some overarching ideas about why our budget is the way it is. And just so that we're speaking rather thoughtfully. Liz, you can jump in anytime. But if you want to start, if you have anything that you wanted to talk about in terms of town meeting or even pre-town meeting for that matter.
Sure, a couple of, a couple of brief points. Robin and I learned recently at a town meeting training that we need to record the names of voters who cast paper ballots at town meeting on elections or questions that go to a paper ballot. So Robin and I have worked out a procedure. Robin's going to modify our voter checklist.
You're kidding me.
No.
Wow.
No.
Wow.
Yeah, so essentially, not much would change, except for when it comes time to cast the ballot, the moderator at the time, if it's me or whomever, would call up, okay, voters who have the last names A through D or A through G come up first. And as they cast the ballot, they would just get checked off.
Oh, my God.
You just need to keep a, you need to keep a record of who voted on paper ballot.
Is that to prevent the.
Record what they voted on to, how they voted? Is that going to be next?
No, no, no.
And the idea?
Cast your, cast your ballots. No, it's a secret paper ballot. No, these are things we learn in trainings, yeah.
Yeah, you do it too much training.
No, we'll get it. It will, it will become normal. And hopefully it will be fluid too. Yeah, so we'll put it into practice and hopefully we'll perfect it, yeah.
So should every person give Robin their name? Because Robin may not know every person.
Well, everybody's going to get a name tag when you sign in so you can do your initial voting.
Okay.
So everybody's going to have a name tag, first name, last name.
But then you're going to have to have another set of checklists and check out when they bring their ballot up, right?
Right.
I wonder if it makes sense to have, maybe this is getting too complicated, but, you know, because we often have guests or journalists or whoever at the meeting who are non-voting members of the meeting, if they had a different color name tag or, if that would make it easier.
Well, the last I haven't gotten a name tag.
No, they don't, yeah.
So, right, so Robin.
So that makes it easy, I guess.
With a couple of steps, just to ensure that voters are the ones who are voting.
Yeah.
Registered voters. So there's, you know, customarily, we have the checklist right at the top of the stairs at the check-in table, so nothing will change there. Voters will check in, registered voters, and they'll get a name tag, and that will identify them as registered voters. And then when it comes time to a paper ballot, if there is one, the clerk's board of civil authority will hand paper ballots to those who have a name tag, so.
Oh, okay.
Registered voters will get ballots. And then when they come up to insert them in the ballot box, they'll just talk to whoever's, whoever's holding the list or the civil authority and just get checked off. So it's like an, like an exit checklist as we do in, you know, an Australian ballot. Yeah. So any questions about that or comments?
Comments? You're spending too much time at VLCT.
Do we have two boxes so that two people could be doing that at the same time to maybe facilitate the?
The little box, we have just the one little box. I'll put my husband to work.
No, that would be even more, well, then you'd have to have two checklists too, and that would be.
But they just have to record the name of the person who votes.
All right, so.
Yeah.
All right, that's, that's the first point. The other point is, as I said at a previous meeting, I would accept a nomination to stand for reelection against moderator. So to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest, I intend to step down, as I did last year during the election of moderator, and yield that, that question to the select board. And the select board.
I'll get up and say, who wants to?
Are they?
Nominations for moderator.
Yeah. And then after nominations are finished, you say by your name, and just can send them closed nominations. And then you could put it to either a voice vote or show of hands, that's a division of the House. But just one, one note on that. Any, any voter could demand a division of the House be done by a standing vote. That's a technical division of the House. That's just a procedural point there. Or seven voters could request that the election be done by paper ballot, so.
Town, yeah.
If you have any questions about procedure there, I'll be there and.
He'll be there.
Any other, um, previous moderators to help both points aboard. But I just want to let you know, in advance, I intend to step down.
Yeah, but for some things, like, there are some things that have to be done by paper ballot, even if there's no, I guess if there was no contest, the clerk might be able to just cast one ballot.
Okay. Unlike, there are town offices that are required to be elected by paper ballot.
Right.
And I looked at our elections coming up, and if our officers are up for election, the ones that would be needing to be elected by paper ballot would be the Lister, Auditor, and Select Board Member. All the other ones could be elected by voice vote or division of the House or if requested by seven voters, a paper ballot. If there are on those, those elections that are done by paper ballot, if there are, if they're uncontested, if there's only one candidate, then the moderator can, by unanimous consent, if there's no objection, direct the clerk to cast one ballot for that nominee, and that's valid. And that's under, under Vermont statute. Yeah.
All right.
So that's all, that's all I have there. One more point on the pre-town meeting forum. I saw the notice, and now, as I said, I'd be glad to moderate it. I'll be there on Thursday. But I, but I just want to repeat, I won't have a device to record it, so I'm hoping that someone else.
By law, we have to record it, right? It's a, considered an open meeting.
Someone planning to have.
Yeah, I think John and I were planning, because we can, we can just push record on the Zoom meeting. Isn't there?
Well, it hasn't been warned for Zoom.
Oh, okay.
No.
I'm not sure you need to record it because it's not a.
I think Stephen.
No, that's, yeah, that's the whole thing that Stephen brought up at the last meeting. And another VLCT mandate that they said that now this pre-town meeting, which we've always had informally, you know, people come, sometimes not many people come. There's no agenda, there's no town business, no voting or anything. Now, they're telling them that, that that has to be warned and operated as a select board meeting, which means all that other stuff kicks in. I called the woman, I called Abby at VLCT or emailed anyways. I said, what the heck, you know, why all of a sudden? And she, well, she said, really, it's because if you're having Australian ballot, yes, you need to have a formal informational meeting before the Australian ballot. I said, we're not having Australian ballot. She said, well, yeah, whatever. I wasn't going to fight about it, but didn't get a straight answer, but, you know. She, yeah, you should do it anyway, so whatever. Okay, I'll take the notes, by the way, they'll be brief.
That's what I gathered from the training I got to. They're, I just want to say, on behalf of VLCT, I've had good experiences with them. I have asked them numerous questions, you know, as a moderator, when I served on the library board. I think they've been very helpful, and they're a great resource for us.
That's their job, to help us.
It is, yeah.
We pay a lot of money.
And some of the advice they give, you know, makes, forces us to change and adopt new practices. I think they're in line with the law, so if, if, you know, if their, if their advice prompts us to change, then, so, we can do it, we can do it, and then we'll practice it, and we'll get easier, but. So, so we'll practice, we'll put some changes into effect to, I mean, to align with the law, so there we go.
And I thought of our last meeting that we had discussed having the pre-town meeting as a Zoom meeting to try to allow people who might not be able to come physically.
I guess I didn't hear that.
Oh, well.
I mean, I didn't think, I didn't know, I mean, I know there's a big screen there, but I didn't know what the accessibility was or, you know, whatever.
Well, maybe I was daydreaming while I was taking notes or something, but sort of what I remember. It would be easier just to have a phone, but.
Well, people could come to the meeting.
Yeah, well, people, you know, meetings are different now. People choose to come by Zoom. I attend a lot of my town meetings with other entities via Zoom, so I drive to Montpelier or whatever. It's, I find it a great platform. It's probably a less personal, that's for sure. I think because we didn't warn it for this.
Right.
So we'll, we'll skip it this time, but maybe we'll try to be a little bit more.
By next year, we'll, I'll be more tech.
What if it's considered as a select board meeting? How come you couldn't do your warning tomorrow in time for Thursday?
I did it today, though. I did the warning today.
Oh.
Doesn't technically have to be warned.
Zoom, we could still have a Zoom.
Right, so it's really up to you.
Yeah. Well, it's fine with me to do it. Would we just send that link out by front porch forum or something like that, or, yeah?
Sure.
What do you think?
Go ahead. Go for it. I don't think people are going to fear me, you know. I mean, I'm amazed that one person came tonight.
Well, maybe we'll have two or three next time.
That's because you provided them the opportunity.
Okay, so maybe John, you and I can work together to get that out. The link for the Zoom for pre-town meeting.
Yeah, I think you're, asking me to figure it out.
I'm asking you, oh, work with me to do it, or?
Yeah, sure. Sure.
We can figure it out.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
It's only like two days away, you know.
Yeah, we're not going to rewire the meeting. We're just going to simply send out a Zoom link so that folks can.
Certification, attorney lobby.
Come in that way.
What is this?
All right, so unless there's.
Yeah, that's the greatest.
Oh, yeah, you skipped. You forgot, tell me.
I was waiting for the updates.
All right.
Okay.
We aren't quite figured it out. Because you wanted to discuss some other town meeting stuff.
I mostly just, you know, like, kind of wrap my head around the big picture. I know we have gone through the budget numerous times and line by line, but like, just the big ideas, the big general pictures about where, you know, where we're spending money next year.
I mean, I think we can tell people that, you know, there's a possibility that we'll get some more FEMA money to ease the transition a little bit. I did do some figuring today, because I knew you wanted to talk about this. The highway department is 57.6% of our budget. Fire department is 18%, and the rest of the general fund, everything else is 24%. But, you know, as far as line by line item, people might ask, why are you paying? You just have to answer.
Yeah, sure, okay. And that's fine.
Anything?
I know that we, I guess my, my point is, we made an effort, you know, for instance, to, like, we, we have money available for us to rent a big machine for a month so that we can put in, do some more covert work with the idea that we're going to make, hopefully, the town a little more resilient to big storm events. We're spending $30,000 on culverts because, which is up from 10 grand, because, you know, it's an effort to make sure that we're not going to, you know, we're addressing those things.
Yeah, we might have to think about whether, whether or not we should not do that right away until we decide whether we're going to have some more FEMA money. I mean, save our $30,000. But anyways.
Well, you will have more FEMA money.
Yeah, you will.
But this year, before the bridges are done?
Before what?
The bridges, before the bridges are done. Because we know the bridges are going to be less than.
The bridges will be done, what did the engineer say, in July or August?
Yeah.
So once the bills are paid, you'll have like $400,000 sitting there. So if you wanted to rent, rent a big excavator to do some cover work. But in the interim, you know, we'll be working with FEMA and the mitigation team at FEMA to identify projects in town.
Yeah.
So we can just hit the ground running.
Yeah.
Once the money is freed up.
Good.
Once we have a final payment to the contractors, and we know exactly how much money is left to do. We can do those other things.
So Alfie can start a list?
Yeah, I've already got one, actually, yeah. But, but the price, prices of culverts have gone up. That's another thing for you, you know, quiver.
Yeah.
Everything is going up.
But, and that's, I think, like, generally, you know, like, our diesel is more expensive, right? Our sand's going to be more expensive, our gravel's going to be more expensive, all because everything is more expensive.
And that was even before, you know, last, before January 20th.
I mean, as far as the gravel goes, we haven't done any resurfacing since I came aboard here. since I came aboard here, zero. We've repaired every year, both years that I've been here.
It's the floods.
For the floods.
Yeah.
So, and yes, that came from, most of that came from FEMA money. But we're still not gaining. We're not building our roads. We're not, you know, adding gravel to our roads. And that's very important. I mean, there's studies that have shown that you, without any traffic, without anything, you're losing an inch of gravel per year just in rainfall.
An inch?
An inch. So, and that's with no traffic. That's no traffic, no grading, that's sitting there just by rainfall. So we need to continue to put gravel on our road. So that's another, you know...
We just need to have a summer without a big rainstorm.
We need a summer with no rain, no rain, that's right.
We'd have other problems.
No flame. No flame.
No flame, right.
Light rains at night.
So if we were to go out and buy some culvert, if Alfie was to go out and buy some culverts early in the spring, could we still use those for FEMA mitigation projects?
If the culverts fit.
Well, yeah.
If they're the right size.
Well...
Right, if they designed something bigger than we, yeah.
Just save your invoices.
No, I'm just thinking about prices going even higher with steel and aluminum tariffs and stuff. What?
Some of those mitigation projects would be size specific.
Yeah.
You know, they'll come and measure the width of the brook and they'll say, well, you need a four-foot culvert or you need a six-foot culvert. Then you got to buy the culvert specific for that project.
I'm assuming there are going to be some projects that are not going to be a FEMA mitigation project, but that you will have identified as like, this is a problem, problem culvert that we need to fix. And they would still qualify, right? Even though they didn't write a mitigation plan for it?
I would write a mitigation plan.
Oh, okay, okay.
And whether or not it would involve an H&amp;H study, depending, it would depend upon if it's a perennial stream.
Perennial stream.
Yeah, if it's not a perennial stream, then you don't really need an H&amp;H study. If it's just a drainage culvert or an intermediate culvert, you don't need an H&amp;H study. Perennial stream should do it.
Okay.
There's a pending better roads grant that would require a larger culvert. So, but that's already, would be funded in the grant. And so that would be a non-FEMA example of... And we should have reimbursing for the culvert from the grant.
All right, I guess we'll just spend some time. I need to spend some time before town meeting.
Yeah.
Looking at each line item again, just so that I can feel comfortable answering questions. Anything else from anybody regarding town meeting? Bonnie?
When is the actual reappraisal going to happen in this year? And when do we start talking to people?
Yeah, I can't, I can't, don't have the papers with me, but it's not till like next year, like 2026 even, maybe.
So we'll want to start educating or get some word out toward the end of this year, the beginning of next year. I'm sort of thinking of like an educational one sheet flyer, like, you know, your town is reappraising, this is why. Call your lister. In the past, we've just done this little tiny little postcard thing that I don't think is very effective or doesn't really have any information about why we're doing it. And what's going to happen is the way that we tell people is we're going to get inundated with the phone calls, angry, wow, you know, people tearing their hair out. So if we can like take some preventative steps and proactively kind of educate the flow, I think that's a good idea. So I would take on the responsibility of creating a pay worthy appraising flyer or notice and, you know, that we could sort of be coordinating to get it out with lots of notice for folks. And then I'm sure it'll come up next year.
I'll get you, I'll try to remember to send you a copy of the contract.
Okay. But it'll probably be a big subject for next year's town meeting.
What? Yeah, maybe.
So we probably have to run the agenda for next year. It's going to be a biggie. I'm just saying. You're going to want to be prepared for that. And I will be with as much information and everything as possible for folks, but just to keep in the back of our minds.
Yep. All right. Unless anybody has anything else to address under updates and other business? Michael, you do.
Okay. Yeah, so I wanted to just briefly update you on the two grants that I'm working on. I have the grant agreement to be signed.
Here's...
There for the EWDPC, the Emergency Watership Protection Program. That's the grant for shoring up the Buck Lake Brook Bank tight to the cattle roads that comes into the village.
That's the one with the big match that we would only do if we get FEMA money to match?
Only do it if we have that leftover FEMA money. And we've already got the grant. So the grant agreement would give the NRCS, they would start doing the design work for it. And then they would, at some point, present that to the town. I don't know when.
And they do the contracting and the RP?
Yeah, they're actually doing the design work themselves.
Oh.
Yeah, so...
But as far as the work, they do the, I mean, they do the bidding for the actual construction?
That I don't know. Whether we would be doing that or whether they would. I don't know that question. I can ask that question, ask them about it. So that's that, grant agreement. Brian Boyd at CVRPC did the bulk of the work on that. So we've been kind of waiting for him to finish it to sign it. I'll send it to the NRCS people as soon as we sign. And then the other, the BRIC 2024 grant for the Buck Lake Brook Watershed Study, that was held up for, the deadline for that is this Friday. It's been held up. They wouldn't even share the application with us until we registered with FEMA GO. And you've heard from Skip today about our challenges in getting signed up for that. We won't be signed up for it by the deadline, but the people at Vermont Emergency Management were kind enough to at least release the application to us in a Word document so that I could work on it with, working again with somebody from CVRPC, a person named Keith Coven. So he and I are scrambling this week to put that together. And we're going to submit it to Vermont Emergency Management. They're going to hold on to it for us until we have FEMA GO up and running because it has to be submitted to FEMA through FEMA GO by the town, not by them. They can't submit it for us. So they're going to, so we'll still be good with the deadline. And then whenever. And I'm sorry that Skip and Lilly have to go through the aggravation of trying to make this work. And then last meeting, we were talking about culverts. I mentioned that I was aware of a program that's being overseen by CVRPC to help pay for culverts. And so I talked to Brian Boyd at CVRPC about that. And he mentioned that that's with a program that is based on phosphorus reduction into our water. So they would have to do a quick assessment of the projects in order to calculate, guesstimate phosphorus reduction in order for the town to qualify for funding for those culverts. So, and obviously, right at the moment, with three feet of snow on the ground, we wouldn't be able to do that. So that'll be something that could happen once the snow melts. So that's a possibility also for the culverts. But maybe now that we have all this extra FEMA money, we won't have to worry about that. So those are my ideas.
Thank you.
So I think one of these tabs came off. I'm not sure which.
I can look through and find that for you. If you want, we could just wait and do that after the...
Okay, yeah.
I'll try to find the one where the tab goes.
Excellent. Well, unless there's any other updates or other business to bring forth for the board, we can...
Yeah.
Yeah?
I just, I was kind of waiting for the moment to say. So Chris, you already know, but at the last meeting, I was kind of on the fence as to whether I was going to be able to attend town meeting. And I'm apologizing to everybody, but I'm not going to be able to be there this year. So I just wanted to let you guys know that.
Thanks for the heads up.
Shall we see you Thursday night if you feel better?
No, so I booked a family vacation.
Oh, already?
Okay. I go through Sunday without realizing that it was over town meeting and all the other stuff. So I will not do that next year.
Okay.
I hope you feel better.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And enjoy your vacation.
Yeah, thank you.
Lots of snow, so that's good.
All right, well, if there are no other, if there's no other business, then I think that we can approve bills and payroll orders off camera.
Oh, yes, that's...
Yep. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm like a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
All right. Liz?
7:45.
Yep, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned at 7:44.